Uh, we have a real call please.
One Fernandez.
We have a corner. Are we gonna approve any minutes? Do we have any minutes to approve? To the city of the real code of, we don't look like nobody here. Let's go to the other business. And the proposed amendment is to revise chapter fifteen, article eight, to clarify registration and operational requirements. And amend chapter thirty to add a definition for short-term rental. And add a section to chapter thirty, article fifteen, to add a short-term rental establishing a short-term rental may be where it may be permitted, space requirement and performance standard.
Hi, good evening. Janice Pokrant, Planning and Zoning Director. I have a brief presentation for you just to kind of outline what we're looking at doing and what we currently have. And so what we're gonna talk about today is just kind of where are we? What is our current ordinance? Where, what are we proposing to do? And then, and then how are we going to get there? Some background on our short-term rental ordinance right now. It was adopted in October twenty-second, so almost a year ago, through the ordinance twenty-four zero forty-eight. You have a copy of that ordinance in your packet. This ordinance has not really been implemented or regulated at this time. And so as staff was looking at it and starting to do some implementation of it, we found a few things that we wanted to revise. But what this ordinance does right now is it requires a registration process. It ensures compliance with fire safety. Make sure that they, they pay their hotel motel tax. And it supports neighborhood character and tourism. And it requires a registration fee and penalties if they don't comply. Some of the changes that we've identified is right now there's a provision for a one-hour in-person contact. What we're wanting to do is kind of change that because some people are not right here. And so what we said is maybe in ninety miles, be able to come and get here in the area if you need to call somebody to be in person. Some of the fees, we have those included in the ordinance. We want to remove that from this ordinance and put it into a fee chart. The city has gone away from wanting our fees to be in each individual ordinance. And we have one consolidated fee chart for all of the fees for the city. So we want to just pull those out of there and put that into that fee chart. We want to provide some zoning guidance. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. What districts they're allowed in, special provisions in residential areas for these. Maybe clarify and change some of the application requirements and transfer of permits. So for chapter fifteen, which is the actual short-term rental ordinance, is there is some redundancy in part there where you have the application and the permit requirements and the renewals. So just kind of clean up some of the redundancy issues. We want to do the, there's a section in there about revoking after revoking somebody's permit that they cannot apply for another permit within eighteen months. We feel like that's pretty restrictive. And so we were kind of looking at a six-month or twelve-month kind of waiting period before they can apply again. And we'd be happy to hear what you think about that because we're kind of torn a little bit about whether it should be a six-month or a twelve-months. So we would love to hear your thoughts on that. And then, of course, the fee chart taking that out. On chapter thirty, the, chapter thirty requirements, what we're wanting to do is put in a definition of what a short-term rental is in our zoning chapter. Right now, we don't have that. And so we're wanting to put that in here and add a new section just for short-term rentals in our zoning ordinance. Right now, our zoning ordinance for all residential districts says that temporary housing is not allowed. And so our current short-term rental registration permit, none of these would apply in the residential areas. And we already know that there are some short-term rentals in the residential area. And so what we're looking at is requiring a spacing for, in the residential districts of three hundred feet. And that is, is in compliance with some of the other regulations that we have for notifications for zoning and plat variances. And so that's why we picked that three hundred. It seems like it's a good block kind of buffer. And that we would allow them in the RS, which is your single family, your R twenty and your aggregate ag districts by special permit. And so that way we can be making sure that that three hundred foot distance is there. Anybody, anybody that already has a short-term rental in these areas, those are considered a, a non-conforming use. And so as long as they're operational, they can continue. It's when they are discontinued and we're gonna, they're gonna need to comply with that distance requirement and get that, that special permit. So permitted by right, that's, they don't have to get a special permit, was, would be in any multifamily districts, any commercial districts, and in your historic district and your downtown district. And then your industrial doesn't allow for houses anyways. And so prohibit this from the industrial district. Add some performance standards. We're looking at that too in this section where you can use these, but they're not for commercial events. So you're not using it to have a party or renting it to have parties. It is, it is for your short-term stays, not for a party rental facility because those are commercial businesses and need to have your, everything for your commercial occupancy for that parking requirement. So they, they still need to have parking. This would be important for somebody if they have a mother-in-law quarters in the back. They need to make sure they have a parking space for that if they're gonna use it as short-term rental. And then your compliance with HOA and deed restrictions. And so we have that in there because we just want to be, we can't enforce the HOA and deed restrictions, but we want to make sure that that's in there so that people are mindful of those restrictions when they're operating this rental. Some engagement that we've already done. We've had, we're setting up meetings. We're trying to set up meetings. So we've had one meeting with a representative from Airbnb. We had a teams meeting with them and the city manager and assistant city manager. We've have the two public hearings, one tonight and then one at city council, at their next city council meeting. We've made some phone calls. I have sent an email out to Capri Temporary Housing that does some short-term rentals. And then we have also the Verbo. We have sent an email to them as well. And then I signed up as a governmental agency for booking.com just because we're wanting to just let these agencies that do some of these bookings for short-term rentals know that this is something that we're wanting to do. And then we, we did do a presentation at the last city council meeting, kind of just along the same lines as this. Just let city council know that that's, this is what we're planning on doing. And that is actually how Airbnb contacted us. They saw that we were discussing this. When we had the conversation with him, he doesn't see that anything that we're wanting to do is of concern to them. They're actually gonna help us by making sure that their hosts know that this ordinance is in place, that they will have to retain that hotel motel tax and get their applications. And so they have already said that they'll partner with us and make sure that their hosts know that this is happening. So our next steps, I listed today. Today, we have this public hearing. And we have the, we would like to see if we could get a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission. Then we have a public hearing on October fourteenth at city council. And what we're wanting to do is finalize this draft ordinance between now and that twenty-eighth. But really kind of on the fourteenth, show this draft ordinance with your comments in it and have final action on October twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth. And that, I promised it would be short and sweet. And so I, we are all here if you have any questions. I, I know that we do have somebody here from the community. I don't, I know that we've already finished the public hearing, but if, would you mind if I ask them if they would like to speak?
If they want to speak?
Would you mind if I, okay.
Yeah.
We have already closed the public hearing, but if you would like to speak on the short-term rentals, we are happy to, happy to speak.
We just came, we were curious as to what was going on.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, did you have any questions for me?
I, I do have a question. On the short-term rental you're talking about, I mean, we have situations like where the National Guard's here and there are several entities. They're exempt, aren't they? It's from this or how does that work or?
So your hosts are always, they're, they can be hosts. And the way that we understood it when having our talk with one of the agencies is your hosts will kind of add themselves and, and, and take them off. It's dependent on when they want to have their units available to the public to rent. And so they said their, their numbers actually fluctuate because of that. And so the tax would be exempt, I think, for your federal employees, but that would just need to be reported. Typically, your federal employees have requirements on where they can stay. And so there's, they have to go into the lowest available unit available. And so I'm not sure we could reach out and see. I don't know what they're, how they feel about Airbnbs right now. I'm, I'm not sure what their policies are.
I have a question. If somebody wants to get a permit, you're gonna charge them non-refundable one hundred and twenty-five dollars? Hundred for the permit and twenty-five dollars for the inspection. When they renew it again, you're gonna charge them fifty dollars? Or they're gonna have to get another inspection or not?
They are gonna have to get another fire. So their fire inspection is annually. And so that's just to make sure that they have their, their, why am I blanking out?
Smoke detectors.
Yeah, their smoke detectors and their, so just some safety equipment there. And so that, the, when we talk to the fire inspectors, they are going to treat that as their annual inspections like they do for some of the other businesses in town. And so really, it's only going to, that's gonna be fee just the way it is for any of their other businesses. And I, I believe that fee was changed. And so there's not a fee unless they have to come back for a reinspection.
Okay. My other question is on section fifteen, one sixty-one.
Okay, yes sir.
Section fifteen, one sixty-one. And, and the item number three. If somebody's revoke, the permit is revoked, they gotta wait eighteen months before?
Correct. That, that is what I mentioned before is we, we feel like eighteen months is not very reasonable. That seems like a long time. I don't know, it could have been something minimal that they were revoked for. It could be something that they were having parties and neighborhoods were complaining. And so, I mean, it could be a wide, it, it could be a wide berth of what it was revoked for, but we believe eighteen months seems like it's a long time. And so we were looking at something between six months or the twelve months. And we kind of
Yeah, I think
torn on that. And so we, we would like to hear your thoughts on what you feel like is a reasonable time.
Yeah, to me it'd be six months or twelve months. Eighteen months is a long time. Because you got, you can still find them by a hundred dollars a day for every, for every day that they're not in compliance. So you got that weapon. So eighteen months to me, it's, it's a long time.
Correct. Yeah, we completely agree with you.
I would recommend six months to twelve months at the most. That's what I, I can see being reasonable.
Do we need to make a motion on the time?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to make a motion or something on the time limit or just a recommendation?
I would love to get your ideas on, if, if you could let me know. I know that Chairman Fernandez has said six, six months. Am I hearing you correct? I don't want to put words on your, in your, your mouth, but you're thinking six months preferable, twelve months? Kind of the extent of it, but?
On the Board of Adjustment is six months. Right, if you're denied, you got six months.
You have six months to wait to come back.
Here we
Months would be fine on this. Like I said, unless it's really horrible and it's, or this routine, then it may go longer, but. Eighteen months is a long time.
I'm, I'm in favor of six months because they're just applying. It doesn't mean you're gonna give them the permit. They still gotta comply. So six months to me
You still have the, the same things that you could do to revoke it the first time. You could go back if you needed to. But most people, if you revoke it once, I don't know that they're gonna try to do that same infraction again.
And I find the difference between denial and revocation. One is
Yeah.
Not like, not, not that hard. But when you revoke a permit, that's something serious.
Correct.
You know, versus deny a permit. So I don't, we, we can
So are you thinking that we kind of split those into two separate sections? One for denial and then one for revoking so that it's very clear?
Yeah.
What, okay, we can do that.
Because when you revoke it, revoke it a license, I mean, you've got, you took on something serious.
Okay. And we do have it, it's in two little sub, it's two subcategories. So you have permit denial, but, and then you have the permit revocation. And I think you're right. I think we could be clearer in those two sections. We, we mix it up right now in the way this ordinance is, is approved right now. It's kind of murky on which one is denial and which one is revoking. But we can clarify that. What are your thoughts on the zoning for chapter thirty changes that we were looking at that are listed in the presentation?
Where do we have the zoning there?
Those are not adopted in any ordinance right now. So those are just in your PowerPoint presentation
Correct.
that we have listed on page six.
Okay, for zoning, we only have RS and RSO. Other cities, they got about five, five definition for residential. And I think we're, we're lacking, but you have more zoning. That way you don't have to just define it, you know, where you want this group of residents, the other one and the other one. You know, I think we need the one or two more zoning to clarify where they're gonna go.
So we have, that'll be a separate discussion of whether we want to add. And that was part of the comprehensive plan of adding different categories for our residential so that you could look at smaller lots. And so that'll be something that we look at when we start implementing the plan with our Envision Del Rio Committee. And we'll definitely bring those recommendations forward to you. Right now, this'll just be what we bring in the ordinance until anything else is approved. And so what we were looking at is any of your residential categories, being your, your single family, your R two twenty, which is your, your large lot, residential areas, your RSO, which is basically your residential occupations, home-based businesses, and then your ag districts. And we added ag districts. We kind of talked about that a little bit. But if you start to look at some of the other states, there's some really great short-term rentals that are on a big piece of land that has the ag and people kind of like to visit those areas. And so we didn't want to exclude them from
Would that, would that be in the city limits?
Mm-hmm, it's only in the city limits. And so we have some ag use inside the city limits. And so it's, it is a very, there's not a lot, but there is some ag use inside the city limits.
I think we're going to small, tiny houses, smaller lots, like in Tesoro Hills. I think that should be a different zoning. You know, because it's, it's so many non-compliance, you know, that, that it, it should be a different zoning for that type of house. You know, that we will have a, because otherwise we're looking at twenty-five feet setback, seven feet, you know? And if we're gonna variate from that, then we need to have another zoning and we'll be, you don't have to go to the Board of Adjustment every time.
Yeah, and I, I agree, I agree with you. We definitely need to look at different zoning categories when we start looking at revising our zoning ordinance. This one will just be for what short-term rentals will be able to go into. And so, and, and whether you think, I, we right now are saying any of the residential areas, if you do a short-term rental, any new short-term rentals, they would have to be approved by the Board of Adjustment with a special permit.
Could change the zoning areas?
Mm-hmm. Just in the residential, the residential, single family, the R two twenty, RSO and ag. And so that means we would, it would go to the Board of Adjustment. It would, it would get the notices to the neighbors and it would still have to comply with that three hundred feet. And so in that map, you can, I don't know if you can see it. We kind of, we tried to put some checkmarks and kind of little, little marks in the different zoning categories. And the checkmarks are the ones that are allowed by right and the ones that have kind of, I probably need to find a better symbol for it. But the triangle is the one that would have to go to the Board of Adjustment.
We'd have to get, okay, go to the whole Board of Adjustment.
And we didn't do that for every section, but you can just kind of see the general colors. And you can, you can see those colors are the ones that would need to go to the board or would need to.
Another area that we're having a lot of trouble is the industrial area part. There's a lot of people who want to build a house there. Or maybe there's a house there. And we have, we need to do something with that area. Industrial area is, is, you know, it's conflicts. People cannot do a lot of thing if it's on industrial.
Correct. If it is, for some reason, I, I, I think they thought that area by the railroad was going to develop as industrial. And so they zoned all of that industrial when that happened. And then also, I think there was a safety component to it too. You don't typically want to have your houses right against the railroad in case something were to happen. For safety purposes, you want to have a good buffer. And also for noise, a lot of times, we don't have a lot of these complaints because we don't have a lot of residential's in the area. But when they come up to a intersection, they do have a requirement for safety that they have to signal their horn. And so it's very noisy. And so there, there's a few reasons why you don't want to have a lot of residential in, in your areas that have the railroad. But the thing is, is a lot of those houses have been there for years that so you're right, we've, we've run into that instance as well. And so right now, it's prohibited for short-term rentals in that area. So if, if that is something you want to make allowed by right or if you want to change that to special permit, but right now, what we're proposing with this ordinance is that short-term rentals would not be, it's, it goes in line with what the zoning ordinance is right now. The residential, new residential can't happen in the industrial zones. The residential's that's there, of course, that can stay. And there's a caveat for that. It's just the new development is not allowed in industrial areas for residential, single family.
That really wouldn't apply to temporary housing?
Temporary housing, if there's a, if there's a house already there and let's say they wanted to rent that out for short-term rentals, it would fall in line with, with the zoning ordinance right now with chapter thirty, which says, you know, it's an existing house. And I think it has to comply with multifamily regulations. And so there is a caveat for the ones that are already in there. It's, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to build a new mother-in-law's quarters in the back, they would need to try to change that zoning to comply with a residential or multifamily or zoning to do that. Just in the industrial area.
No question.
Okay. Do we, would we get a motion to?
Well, if you do, I mean, any kind of guidance, if you're having any feelings about the spacing requirements or going to the Board of Adjustment, if you could just give us any guidance or thoughts that you have on that, that would be great.
Right now, we only have the timeframe. The rest of it, like I said, as far as where they're located or when they apply is, is a matter of the zoning. Because I mean, they're not, they may possibly not all be in the same area. We really don't want to extend that until you know.
Right. And we were trying to, when we kind of looked at these regulations, we, we looked at what other cities do. We looked at some case studies. And I know that Del Rio doesn't have a huge market for short-term rentals right now. We're trying to think of these ordinances in a longer kind of term. There's some cities that have more of a visitors' market that was having a big challenge with short-term rentals, that everybody was, was vacating these houses that were in their downtown areas and making those as short-term rentals. And so it ended up being, it changed the character of the area because you had so many short-term rentals and not a lot of people that were living in those areas anymore. And so that was just some of the studies that we had seen. And again, you're comparing apples to oranges because it's a city that has a different, more of a different demographic for their vacationers that were coming in. But one day, we do hope that we have a big demographic for that.
We can add. When the ordinance was changed at the end of last year, why was it changed?
It was a brand-new ordinance that was adopted. And the reason why we wanted something is because we're losing money on any of the hotel motel tax right now, any of the short-term rentals. We're not aware of any of them that are paying in that money. And so we needed to have this ordinance in place so that we could start charging them. And at the time, we were told that we needed to hire a company that would manage it for us because it was just gonna be too much for us to manage in-house. That doesn't seem to be the case. It seems like it's something that we can manage in-house that you would have to pay them a fee and and they would notify the host. And it seems like these booking companies already have that in place, where they notify the host that this is the tax that needs to be collected. It, it seems like that's already in place. And so, I think that was always the challenge is, um, how, where, where do we get the money to pay for this firm that's going to manage it for us and, and kind of working out all those details? So that's why it really was never enacted. It was here, but nobody enforced it.
So we don't have anything like that in place, do we?
It's, it's in place.
Firm to handle this?
Uh, no, we don't. We would be handling it in-house. And, um, when we do get calls right now, um, we've maybe had a five families call and say, we're looking at wanting to do this. We tell them, here's the short-term rental ordinance that we have right now, but it's, we're not enforcing it. So just keep, keep your eyes open because it is something that we want to start enforcing.
You gonna present this to the city council, right?
Yes, sir.
And they're gonna ask you if we pass it or if we're in favor or not?
Correct. Um, we would like to put down any kind of recommendations that you might have as we move this forward to council.
Okay. Somebody wants to make a motion?
We're just gonna recommend approval or?
I, I do have your comment about the, um, revocation on here. Um, and so, I have recorded that, so that will be recorded with your, your direction and guidance to us. And we'll go ahead and make that change.
Make a motion, we approve it?
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. And, and any questions or discussion? If not, uh, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I'm gonna keep this from my file.
I was gonna say, this one is one I want to take.
Hey, file.
I'm just gonna have it gonna enforce it.
Yeah, it's there anyway.